Trip to Butterfield under Board Business. Approval of minutes, we don't have any minutes this time, we did them last time. Reported members, if they have anything? No. No correspondence, so on to Old Business, which is 126 Main. So we're gonna look at the, at the new set of plans, obviously, to look for preparedness for the March 1 joint public hearing with the zoning board of appeals. So I guess this would start.
Well, just, I guess, as you know, and maybe Karen mentioned it before, but the secret loop was closed last night, and certificates of appropriate, that's where issued for the demolition or the removal of the building and for the new building. So hopefully we'll be on our way quickly.
Very good.
I think most of what's happened with this plan, and Karen please correct me, are really just details, I'm just gonna run you through it again, this is the, this is the existing conditions map. It, maybe it just shows you what's there, and we've been over that, and that really hasn't changed since the beginning. And I put them a little bit out of order, so, because kind of the first thing we're gonna do is, is set up at least some of the erosion control that we need. So this is, well, this is sheet four, but really, in terms of what we're doing, we're gonna have to have erosion control in place, at least in part, when we first start. Of course, the Norway maples will be coming out in March, and the secret loop is closed, now we can do that, and we're intending to do that. And, and so, that's the first, really the first, first step. And then this is the demolition plan, which will take out the building, take out some of the old fencing that's gonna be replaced, and walkways, all of the stuff that's gonna be taken out, well, I guess we'll cut the slip, cut the trench in for the new electric, and do those, do those, those tasks that get rid of the stuff. This will take a little while, because we have made a commitment to disassemble the building, as opposed to just knock it down, so that, that's part of the conditions of the certificate of appropriate, that's to take what materials we can, that can be salvaged and reused, or salvaged and reused somewhere else, and that takes some care. While that's happening, there will be a photo documentation of the elements of the building, that will eventually end up being something, a document that rests here, and perhaps at the library, and perhaps at the history museum. We assume they're gonna take it, but, you know, they have to accept it. When we get into the proposed improvements, again, we've been, we've been talking about, about all of this, the, the primary feature in terms, besides, of course, the building, is the previous parking that will be installed. We did look into the trench drain that you had asked about before, and the answer is that this is really getting no water, other than what falls straight down from the ground, and we didn't feel it was necessary to have that, and the pipe would run cleaner, because what's gonna happen is the water's gonna hit this curb and go, go above it, so it's not gonna get there. It will have some capacity to, in the gravel that's replacing it, to hold some of the water, and that will eventually infiltrate, and this will make a clearer path and unrestricted path to the rest of the, the water.
My concern mostly was with the influx of the root drains, and also the sump pump for that main drain going to the chamber, all the way in the back of the property. Once that becomes filled, you have a baffle on the, that outlet pipe, but it can't accept any more water, so it's gonna overflow, and when it overflows, it's gonna go to the west, because that's the, where the natural way that property goes. But if, I mean, if they looked at it, that's all I really wanted out of it.
We did take another, we did take another look at it, and we're gonna have, I really think it's a significant improvement. I think we've made a decision with regard to the fences, so. And then the final step, of course, is, is the striping and parking on the parking lot, which is a separate plan, just, just so it can, things can set, be readable. And then we're really done. We did take both a practical look, Sue and her husband went out with a vehicle and a board and drove down and was pulled up against the fence, a large, large vehicle, and, and saw that a five-foot fence would, would, five feet of solid fence would, would, would block the, the light from going across into the neighbors. We did go in, do some research to find out what happens with, with light beams. Now, if somebody comes in there with, with high beams, this, this is what, we didn't test that, we tested low beams, they're supposed to basically ride even with the, with the top of the, top of the lamp in, in the vehicle, so this, as you come down, will not, as long as they're using their low beams, which will not go above that fence, and, and so, that solidified the size of the fence that we wanna use. There were many other changes, I can't, fencing, screening, and, oh, the lighting details that they put on, you could probably talk to the lighting better than I can talk about.
I can talk about the lighting.
Before we move away from the fencing and screening, can, can we address here the question of the plantings at the back, this was something that last night Phil Heffernan was, you know, expressed a concern over, and I know that you, at the back of the lot, the anticipation is that you'll have low shrubberies to accommodate the inevitability, I guess, of cloud snow, and against the, against the fence that is, I guess, adjacent to Phil Heffernan's property, he's concerned with the height of the fence, sort of not, not providing adequate screening over time, shielding his, you know, view of the, the parking lot, which is dark now, unlit, it will eventually be lit, and of course, that makes it visible, even though it will be low, lower lighting. And so, I was hoping that you guys could speak to that a little more, a little, a little more substantively than, hey, we've got this nice fence and these low lying shrubs.
I can actually speak to that, 'cause I went to Phil's today.
Oh, good, okay.
And we looked and walked, and, um, what I said to Phil was that, first of all, his view, and I agree, looks down, and there is a void, that no fence, and in my opinion, no shrub is going to be able to prevent that, he's very high up, and he's looking down into the parking lot.
Yeah.
But, he has, his idea is similar to what, what I would like to see planted, but, and what I said to him about the landscape plan was that this was something that was prepared for me by Rosedale Nurseries, who happened to be doing work in my yard at the time, and I just took, we walked over to the, to Main Street and looked around, and I asked him to lay something out, mostly at the time we were thinking of the Trees for Tribes program, and the different species, and I asked him to see what, you know, what would fit with our plan. It hasn't been something that I then went back, there are things on that plan that I don't like, but, that needs to be, you know, gone over more, and I said to Phil, I don't feel like landscaping is something we can say, okay, we're gonna put this here, and we're gonna put this here, and it's gonna work. You know, sometimes you plant something, and it doesn't thrive where you're planting it, and you have to keep doing it, so, I like Phil's idea of the green, not hedge, but something ten to twelve feet.
He had referred to an arborvitae.
He has a beautiful row of, I don't know if it's an arborvitae, I feel like it's some kind of cypress, they are perfect.
Yeah.
But will they like that spot, I don't know, he has them up in a high sandy spot, that's a low wet spot near the stream, so.
Yeah, I don't know what.
I understand his concern, I'm not sure we can answer it from his perch up there on the hill, and I, I like better his idea of planting where, where he would like to, than the cluster that's shown on the, the nursery plan, but that's just, to me, a very malleable thing, you know, if somebody comes in and something's not working, or if something dies, we try something again. So I did talk to him about the concern of screening, and he also has a worry, and we sort of disagree about the gate he has, that accesses the back of his property. I'm not comfortable with a pass-through, I don't want people from my business feeling like they could exit through his yard, and I don't really like the idea of him feeling like he can pass through, you know, my, like, I'm just not comfortable with that.
It's a liability issue.
We don't do it that way in the country, we all say, no, but it's a different place. So, we talked about, and I talked to the fence company, so there are options when you put up a panel fence, that they can make a panel removable easily, with diff, they have different systems for that, so I said, you know, I'm not crazy about the pass-through, but I'm certainly willing to put up a panel that could easily be removed if he had a problem, you know, he's, he likes to maintain that, he has like a rock wall around the stream, and, you know.
Right, he had mentioned this.
He has a beautiful yard, yeah, yeah. So, I did talk to him, and I feel like him and I can work together, you know, and try to, I understand, his view is just an eagle's eye view into the parking lot, I'm not sure that that can be prevented with anything, but.
I don't think the idea, I mean, I bring it up not because I'm seeking some, like, hundred percent resolution, I just wanna make sure that, that some attention is given to that, and we've had other situations here in the village where, adjacent to your former property, there, you will remember the evergreens that were, that were installed there, and so, and that was a condition of the site plan for the, for that, that business, and that was important to quality of life at that location, and so, it's, I think it's the same thing here for Phil, and I don't know how that, how that, you know, with the mech, like mechanically, if there's some, if there's a notation that we put on the site plan, or how that's dealt with.
But the difference in elevation must be ten feet, maybe more?
Oh, probably even more.
More, I mean, he's, his ground.
He goes up several stories, right?
Yeah, his ground floor is a bird's eye view, it's, it's kind of a unique, but, any kind of screening won't screen his view into the parking lot, but it might, like, right now, there's just an empty hole, and some bad fencing, you know, so I, I think anything will look better.
Maybe a notation, I mean, it sounds like a notation would be within. I wanna make sure that, like, it's documented, that, you know, so in case it, it becomes some, like, in case it, it becomes something down the road, that we have, that it's been aired and vetted.
That's fine, I, I, I mean, we've reached out to all the neighbors, and.
And I can see they're deeply concerned by their presence.
Well, it's just that they, except for the one person who didn't contact at all, they're all thrilled that something is being done.
Yeah.
I think, and hopefully it will be different over there than it is right now, I'm hoping there will be some cars in the parking lot, and a little more activity during the day.
Yeah.
But I also think that, um, the lighting is gonna be on when we're there, and it's dark, you know, I don't plan to be there at night, maybe one night a week, we have a night class.
At the apartment, you have the, yeah.
There's also parking lot lighting, I think that's what.
But the parking lot lighting will be on when we're there, I'm not gonna leave that on all night, just for when people are going into the parking lot.
Oh, I believe I had misassumed.
Yeah, well, and that's.
That that was like twenty-four hour bollards, you know.
Yeah, no, no, just for when people are trying to get to their cars, you know.
So are they gonna be motion sensing, or?
I think we'll flick the light switch off when we leave, and turn it on when we're there, you know what I mean?
In the parking lot?
Yeah.
Oh.
I'm guessing, right, that's what I do in my house, when we need the lights, we turn them on, and.
Yeah, so Glenna is referring to motion detection, and that could be.
Double edged sword, you know, because it gets cat running through.
Right, yeah, I, we were talking about that, so I didn't want them going on, 'cause a squirrel is, you know, yeah.
But you can have it on during the day, and then.
You know, we could look into.
You could flick it off, or you could have it on during business hours, as a motion detector, so it's not constantly lit, and then, and maybe it senses the motion coming in from the side, and then you can still switch it off, so it doesn't get lit at night.
Might be a better solution if, if we, it could, just occurred to me, is if we had, like, a garage clicker for the tenant, came in and turned the lights on for five minutes, and then they went off by themselves, you wouldn't have a motion detector problem, and it would, the only one that could turn it on would be your tenant, who might come at eleven o'clock, or, you know, or something like that.
And we can also separate the lighting, so if a tenant is coming and going, they don't have to light up the whole parking lot.
Yeah, just be, just be enough to light it.
It can light a section close to the door, because I would imagine the tenant, like, we weren't talking about designating parking, because I think that should be fluid, you know, as, as people are potentially using the business during the day, and wanna park close to the door if the tenant's out, there should be the flexibility to park wherever you want, but a tenant could turn on a portion of lighting that's closer to the door to guide them safely in, so we don't necessarily have to have them switched, so that every single light comes on.
Right.
But, yeah, but, I think.
Sue, one of the things that you mentioned about, that you and Phil talked about, was the cedar trees, and you, your concern would be that it would be in wet area, I don't know if you have enough room, but, on a lot of jobs that, that I've worked on in the past, where we've had wet areas and had to have plantings in, we've actually had a small berm, which actually raised the elevation, I don't know if you have enough room back there to do that, but if you did, that may solve the root problem.
Okay, yeah, and that's, I think, something that I have to go over with the landscape, you know, in the nursery, and say, what do you have, and what is gonna, what can we work with, and, you know, which, I'm not ready to do that today, you know, so.
But the, you had pointed out that the issue with that area was that it was designated in the plan for snow pile, so if it's a berm, is that, does that somehow conflict with?
That's a different area, though, from where Phil, where it would be advantageous for Phil to, to have plantings.
Oh, I had understood that it was, it was, it was this, this.
So, the place that would be nice.
'Cause this is Phil's, right?
Yeah, so this is the area where it would be nice to plant with the, on this corner, not this back corner, so the snow is in here, and things that are planted there would be dormant, when the snow pile needed to be there.
Right, so if you're planting here for Phil, and you were contemplating, I mean, I'm just thinking, like, if you're con, it seems to me that a berm might not be actually a viable option there, in view of the, the, you know, intended use beyond the berm to get to the.
I think we can plant something in here that will accomplish what he's looking for, and I actually like that better than, there was like a cluster of evergreens here, which I didn't like.
Where's the parking aligned with this part, sorry?
One oh five, that's the parking.
Yeah. One oh five's on the bottom. So then, so this is an area of concern.
So this would be the spot where it would be nice to plant something.
And how deep, sense eight feet deep, or, the distance there?
Yeah, I don't think this is eight feet, this radius is eight feet.
It's quite close to the sun.
Okay.
But something like that hedge that he has on the side of his yard would actually be nice, they're not, like, they're, they're, they have a broad base, but then they go up, they're really very nice, but he has them planted close.
These are the cypress?
He's calling them an arborvitae, I feel like they look like a cypress, but, they could work, they could fill that area, and then kind of tip off over the fence, but they don't get huge, you know, ten to twelve feet, he said, so.
They don't, they don't get way, way up to obscure as you want.
Yeah, I, I'm not crazy about those evergreens.
It depends on what you, it depends on what you get, you know, the ones you had to put up, the hill where I live on, they were less than five feet, I have a picture of Mary Rice, she was taller than the trees that were put in there, and if you, and if you, and if you look at them now, they're, they gotta be fifteen feet high, and they're a solid wall, they're a solid wall.
Is that the only area, so, I guess my other question is, just along the parking, and is there any issue of additional screening on this side, or, with planting, or is that not?
So that's that area where the drain comes down, and, I think originally we had thought about a green planting, but the neighbors were very much wanting a fence there.
Just a fence.
Well, it's not a very wide area, so once you get the fence in, there's not a lot of space to plant, so then, we came up with the idea of maybe some climbing vines, or some kind of grass, which was one of the suggested plants from the state. And again, like, who knows what's gonna take there and thrive, you know, might have to try more than once, but that was pretty, to the one neighbor especially important, the fence.
And, yeah, I mean, as long, I think it's just to, yeah, double check that, for the neighbors that are bordering on this side, since that's where the, a lot of the headlight activity's gonna be, right?
I would think.
Yeah, just to anticipate if, if a fence is sufficient, you know, seems like it's the right height, the minimum height, right, five feet.
Well, that five feet actually gives us a fair amount of extra.
The image. Oh, relative to the cars, yeah.
Yeah, the image you had shown of the truck with the headlamp, what, what was that height?
Well, that, that was just a graphic of, of how the beam projects from the headlight, and how, where it hits the fence, and if you look closely at it, you'll see it's well below the five feet.
Okay, okay.
That's a standard height vehicle, or is that like an SUV type?
That's actually, that's the largest pickup truck that we have in our stock of vehicles.
Oh, the largest pickup truck, okay.
That you personally have in your stock?
No, no, in a stock of little drawers.
Oh. The biggest truck on paper, okay, okay, thank you, you were gonna now launch into the lights, right?
Yeah, you guys are ready to.
Thank you, for discussing that.
Here is just a packet of lighting cut sheets and a key plan, the lighting is actually indicated on this drawing, C105, so on the official set, but that key just keys the actual fixtures to the plan, and we have the fixture cut sheets there as well. So, basically, we were talking about using the flint bollard around the parking area, the, this Bowman wall sconce on the building, and then, we actually changed, the last time we met, we were talking about using the shorter version of the flint bollard at the garden path, but we felt it was higher than we wanted to go, in terms of the height of the fixture, we don't know exactly, again, what the plantings are gonna be out there, but we don't want enormous plantings that are gonna block the entrance to the building, we wanna create an inviting entry, so, the, the lighting here, we're, we're going for this fixture, which is about ten and a half, actually almost eleven inches high, and three of those, and that's really just to provide, you know, kind of garden path lighting, yeah. And then, the lighting in this area, and at the front of the building, will be recessed lighting in the overhangs of the building.
And are you anticipating that this, like, the, the sconces, the garden path lighting will also be on only for certain hours of the evening, and, you know, in the same way the parking lot, you were sort of talking about the parking lot lighting not being on all night, or?
So that's kind of my instinct, I don't know how the village feels, like, one person actually brought up about, could we keep our store, uh, the, the windows lit, she thought it added to the ambiance of Main Street. I wouldn't have the lights on when I wasn't there, I guess, except for maybe, you know, something in the display window, for a period of time, I would think eventually the lights should all go off, right?
I would think like midnight or something, I mean, you would think.
I actually have never been, I should've looked last night.
Some, like, a lot, like, you know, like Berkman, a lot of them are fully lit, you know, twenty-four seven, I mean, but it isn't a bad idea, obviously, to, you know, around midnight or whatever, to.
Only time you see a lot of lights is just before Christmas, you know, and then you see, almost all of Main Street is, you know, fairly lit up. A quick question, the bollards in the parking lot itself, are they steel or aluminum? The only reason I ask is for your information more than for mine, because where they're positioned, is a good chance they're gonna get whacked, and once they get whacked, you're not gonna like it. So either buy extras.
Right, yeah.
Or make something substantial enough where they're not gonna get damaged to the point where they're not gonna be functional.
Right, they're extruded aluminum, it says, opposed.
They might be steel inner case and aluminum outer case, because they make them, like, brushed aluminum for appearance, and if that's the case, then they shouldn't really, they'll scar a little bit, but they won't damage that much.
Right, well, thank you for pointing that out, we'll definitely look into that more closely. Yeah, and there's a photo diagram, a lighting analysis of the bollard lighting, we didn't do an analysis for the building lighting, it's really residential scale lighting, we chose fixtures with downlight directional lighting, so we're eliminating, you know, glare, and.
What are the foot candles, actually, when it's fully?
So, the foot candle, they said it was one foot candle about six feet out from the fixture, and then, even drop off from there, so at the farthest point out on that diagram, you're at point one foot candle, a tenth of a foot candle, and the gentleman that I was working with said that a tenth of a foot candle for reference is equal to the light of a full moon, right, so just to give people a sense of that.
It doesn't, not gonna throw a lot, cast a lot of light, with one foot candle even.
Right, so it's really, at the way he described it, it's, it's a swatch of light, versus, you know, it's not whole lighting, it's not elevated, so even, you know, for people walking, you're not really lighting people's faces walking through the parking lot, you're lighting the surface area, so the goal is just really to provide a safe environment for people to get to and from their cars, but not, you know, fully illuminate the whole parking area.
It's typical, like, for, uh, commercial or, or public parking lots is the pathways are ten, the travelway is five. And that's what I'm saying, you're not gonna, you know, I don't think you're gonna shed a lot of light, you know. I don't think anybody should be concerned in, in that area.
Yeah, and, and again, the selection of the fixtures was, you know, sought out so that the lighting was not a fully circular light coming from the fixture, but directed into the site and down. And we recognize that for people like Phil up above looking down, he's gonna see the light. And for people on Garden Street on their upper floors looking down into the parking lot, they're gonna see the light. And, um, but we feel that we've done a good job at kind of minimizing what that is and also providing what we need in terms of lighting the space.
The stone's gonna diffuse the light anyway, opposed to concrete or, you know, something light.
It's all about the true grit.
That's right. So true.
And I mentioned the footpath lighting would be left on, right, you'd leave that on for the tenant?
So, I don't know, we, I don't know, we, we were talking about this a little bit, because I don't, I guess I don't understand motion sensors and I'm afraid of that. But I guess we have to look into what a tenant would do if there was a tenant, you know.
That's not gonna be your rental unit, or?
Well, it is, but I don't, I'm not sure when I'm ready to embark on that, you know, one thing at a time. So actually, I haven't really thought about that, but I would, I would, I think I would rather have a situation where somebody who was coming had the ability to put lights on as they needed them, as opposed to having lights on all the time.
Is that, I would, I want, I, I know you're, you're not there yet and it's, it's an evolving, um, process for you, but in the event that you do have a tenant, you will be, I guess, obliged to have insurance for, you know, property insurance.
Right.
And, um, it, it may be, uh, something you will need to have, you know, a lit way, so your tenant doesn't come with.
Yeah, I, I hate to say, but I haven't really thought about that, 'cause my mind is not working about a tenant.
Yeah, and I totally understand that, it's, it's an eventuality, and so what happens with the decisions that you make about that and needing to respond to those? That very reasonable safety issues will, will be seen by, or, or not, or, you know, by your, by your neighbors, so the.
The tenant entrance is only in the rear, or?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, you think if they're not driving and using the village, they're walking alongside and then walking out. And those are such low foot candles and inside the plantings, I mean, it would probably just look ambient, you know, just have them on, it wouldn't look like it got lights on. And obviously, I bet you'd switch them separately, but I, we don't have a whole lot in our code about, you know, like, foot candles, and, I mean, it's, um, we should, you know, we should, because it's becoming, you know.
The, uh, the south end of the village, the, the lighting that's on twenty-four seven in the parking lot around the lady pavilion and near Presbyterian offices.
All proved.
Is notable and, and so, and it's, that's, it's really a.
Spaceship-like.
Yeah. And so we, you know, it, it is notable, it is, it does, it does impact neighbors and who try to sleep.
No, without question, look, I didn't, I didn't buy a house that was by a street light.
Yeah, so, um.
You know, I went at night, I'm like, oh my god, the whole bedroom's lit, I'm like, god, I don't want, I don't want this, like, really?
But also, I don't wanna overstep here, if this is something, if this is a topic that really is not for us.
We don't, we don't have a whole lot in our code, and we, no, we do, we know, because obviously, a lot of what, about what is compatibility, right? And compatibility of uses, you got residential against commercial, which is always the biggest challenge, right? And they're being sensitive to that, and I think that what they're doing is, 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 is probably gonna work, but, you know, we'll, we'll figure out at the public hearing, hopefully. Are you encouraging people to come, or?
I, I don't, I am not saying anything, aside from talking with the neighbor, I, I have people who. You know, I feel like if people have something to say, they'll come, and I don't wanna say, would you come for me, of course I can, you know.
Any chance you, people are writing letters of support, or?
Someone asked me if I would write a letter for them to sign, and I was like, I, no, if you wanna write a letter, I, you know, so.
So they didn't have to sit there last night till midnight, I think.
Yes, right.
Yeah, no, I, it's good, it's also good for the file, it's good for just kind of the, you know, I mean, it's amazing that what, just talking in advance of a project can, you know, can help with neighbors. As opposed to after the fact.
And we did have two neighbors, but one couldn't quite make it to the, to his chance to talk.
He did, I thought, a really good job in, um, trying to stick it out.
Yeah, but it was.
This is H D R B?
Yeah, it was just, it was a long, there were two very, uh, rich topics on their agenda and, and they start a little later, 'cause Al commutes, so it was a long one.
Yeah, I don't think we started till ten, fifteen or ten.
Yeah, you, you were the second and it was a late one.
So, we'll see. Okay, so, feeling confident we're ready for the public hearing?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, well, obviously, we'll, there's probably gonna be conditions and, you know, finally, we'll, we'll hear what they have to say, and we'll talk about the fence, and we'll talk about the lighting and the screening, and obviously, you know, subject to any, anything that comes up. But it sounds like you've done a lot of the work for us, to be honest, we're just talking to the neighbors, um, and, 'cause that helps everybody. It helps this board, it helps, helps you guys, it just helps the, you know, kind of the community, um, as well, to kind of figure out that we're all kind of in this together, regardless of all of our property rights, it's all great, but, um, it's also good to have nice neighbors, and, um, and it's great that they all support the fence, 'cause fences are kind of odd things, people love them, hate them, they're typically not in the room in between.
Fences make good neighbors.
Yeah. And I think that, I mean, to the extent that somebody is so elevated, as, there's only so much you can do, I don't, you know, I mean, I think reducing the foot candles, reducing, you know. We'll see if there's any comments about, you know, are these lights gonna be on all night? You know, 'cause if you don't have any need to have them all on, it might be nice to have a site plan note to just kind of say, let's just, eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock, whatever. I mean, you don't wanna, you don't wanna create a situation, we can't run your business, 'cause you're not, I mean, you may have, uh, you know, late night knitting circles. You know, after work.
We were just talking, we were dying after last night, we're, I'm a nine o'clocker, I don't know about you. I know, but you might have a young crowd of knitters start to come in.
Yeah, on the seven o'clock train.
Yeah, okay.
Exactly, you could just put the coffee on and go upstairs, lie down. Just ring me when you want me to turn the lights off. All right, great, well, congratulations on your approvals, I know it's been a long haul.
Can I, when will the actual resolution, assuming that public hearing is relatively positive and you close it?
Um, it, basically what will happen is if, you know, it, whether or not the board votes to leave public comment open, I think there's been an, I personally think there's been enough time that people have had time to comment, that, you know, especially with all the hearings, I don't think we would. I would suspect we would close it that night, but I wouldn't say that until.
Well, you gotta, you gotta, you don't know who's gonna.
Until we see what comes up, you know, you know, we get a room full of people that are all, you know, um, you know, but, but let's not go there yet, but let's just, you know, so.
There was some discussion about that last night regarding, um, whether or not to close the, or keep it open for public com, for written comments. They ultimately closed it.
They closed it, okay.
In the case of last night, and I think one of their considerations.
Well, you guys have also been under review for a very long time, so, I mean.
Well, their, their consideration was primarily in, um, as, as a result of the, the hearing that the town board was having on the, the safe storage resolution.
Oh, that people weren't able to make.
Yeah, and, and, um, and so, you know, part of it is, you know, people, people come, it's, you know, they don't, they don't call them public comments. They call them public hearings, because people like to speak and be heard, and so if there's a, if, I'm personally, I was unaware until after this meeting had been arranged. I was not aware of the, the, the meeting at the town.
Oh, the gun store?
For the town, yeah.
About the high school?
So for me, I, there was a conflict, but I chose to come here. And, um, uh, but other people, you know, couldn't, so I think that was, that was it. So unless somebody pops up and says that there's gonna be some conflict on the night of.
And the good thing, again, I mean, not to beat a dead horse, but I mean, it's, 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 no, it's just that people have no understanding that it's happening, right? And you guys have done a good job of that. A lot of times what happens is, I didn't know, right, you know, we don't post signs here, which, I, I kind of wish we would, you know, they're not pretty, but, you know, you know, this project is, you know, this property is under, is under review by X number of boards, and so people have constructive notice, um, but it sounds like, you know, they're all notified that this project is happening. They all know it's commercial property, they all know it's gonna be improved, it's gonna be drastically changed, right? And if you, so that's it, right, really, it's their job to come here, look at these plans and find out whether or not they've got an issue, right? So I think that the constructive notice is really strong, I would, I would suspect we'd probably close the hearing that night, I don't, you know, unless something were very unusual.
And the resolution would come at another meeting, or would the resolution come that evening?
No, John would usually just draft the, we, we typically do it at the, at the meeting, we just draft, we, you know, well, I'm sure we'll have some conditions.
Of course.
Right, and I'm sure we'll want some notes and, you know, and we'll, you know, we'll be pending, you know, whatever.
A little Johnny come lately, but is the two thirty-nine referral being done?
Well, that's a good question, because the county road, right? Yeah. That's a, holy moly. Does that affect the public hearing?
Oh, god, I hope not.
Well, it doesn't prevent your public hearing, prevents your voting, but.
It, taking action, yeah.
But, 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 you know, if, if it hasn't been done, we need to get it done and I might be able to make a call.
Well, did the lead agency?
No, it's not the lead agency, it's two thirty-nine referral.
No, no, I know, but I'm saying, did, did H D R B? I would think John would have done, let me check with John.
I don't think the H D R B is, is, um, it's, it's for site plans and subdivisions and special use permits.
That's a good point, because they're, yeah, they're looking at ministerial, ministerial actions, yeah.
Well, that's not ministerial, but it's.
No, what they're, the other.
The other one, the other one needs to be, and we can we can make a call or two and get that, that thirty day limit usually.
You get somebody to respond?
Somebody to respond if it hasn't been, but.
Uh, let me check with John.
I think, I might ask him, I think the same question asked the S for the zoning board.
For Z B A, yeah.
Yeah, because that's a special use permit.
Yep, yep. John's usually on top of that, so, I mean, I don't.
You're five hundred feet from, it's, it's five hundred feet.
From the county road?
County Road, municipal boundary, State Park.
Yeah, no, it's definitely a two thirty-nine referral, um, but it's just pro forma, they basically just, they just waive.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
I've one time seen them turn it down in forty-five years.
So, our Main Street is the county road, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's State Road, the Route ninety.
Ninety.
I don't think there's any county roads.
It's proximity to ninety.
And you said five hundred feet? And that's within, they're within the eight thing?
It's close, yeah, yeah, well, maybe I'm. Well, I don't think it is.
That seems a lot further.
No, 'cause you got High Street, is this, no, that's the code.
Well, we'll sort it out, I, I would be surprised if that was.
It's close.
It's close.
Yeah.
Do you have your copy of the E A F here?
We don't, no.
Aaron, you didn't bring yours?
I know, I mean, god, I was traveling late tonight, I thought, oh, I don't have to bring, you know, this, I don't have to bring that.
I don't want it on display.
I'll be very happy to be lost.
Any of the location maps on your drawing show up?
But they're not to scale.
They're to scale, but I don't think we, they're, they're good enough to scale.
I have a question that David asked last time. The chart that shows the.
The state of the parking.
Parking table?
Not just the parking table, but the percentage of the structure versus the lot size.
Lot coverage?
Yeah, the structure versus, did the, did the structure change size recently? No, it's still the ninety, the, the lower level of the structure, is that still about nineteen?
The footprint of the proposed structure?
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, it's like fourteen hundred and forty-seven is the first.
It's fourteen hundred, okay, I might have, maybe I misread it, because on one of the, when you had highlighted the commercial space, I read it as nineteen, but maybe I was mistaken, it might have been fourteen.
I hope I didn't, I didn't miswrite it, um.
No, it's fine, I believe.
I think actually we're okay.
Did you, did you do something?
Well, I did that, it's, 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 it looks like, I mean, you should look at it. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a little bit more than a half inch. So I think we're probably okay, I'm sorry to freeze it, I'll fall soon.
That's right, it's better to be.
Oh, it's one, one nine seven, so perfect, so then the footprint is fourteen, so then.
All right. And the footprint goes to the outside of the building, but the way the code defines floor area is inside the walls.
The inside walls, right.
That's why it might seem like, oh, that can't be fourteen and then.
No, I, that makes sense, I think I was misreading this number somehow.
Thinking it was one nine.
You have a six inch wall thickness?
Yeah.
I don't have my reading glasses, but it looks, there's a map on there.
It's probably because of fire.
Check it here, it looks like it's over.
Five and a half steps, sheathing.
Right, right.
Rock firing.
The two by six framing. Were you able to, just curious, were you able to correct the encroachment on the staircase from the neighbor? Or was he able to correct his encroach?
No. I don't know if he can.
Oh, oh, there's a solution, is that?
Yeah, we, 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 we sort of let that go, um, we put a new stair up and I don't know, yeah, we didn't know if maybe he had to have a certain width of stair, in which case, you know, everything of his is exactly in his square of property, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we still have the issue of his propane tanks, which probably could be solved with smaller tanks. I don't know, it just didn't seem like.
That's a good, good point.
A battle to be fighting, I guess, at this point.
Understood, understood, okay.
He has a very difficult situation.
Sorry, getting so tight.
Yeah, he just has nowhere to go and no way to get out.
Two thirty-nine.
I think he resolved that access by getting, getting out through Joy Allbrink's backyard.
Yeah, that's what I mean, he's at the mercy of his neighbors, I guess, and so, in a lot of ways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's over, it's over five hundred.
Over?
Yes.
You feel, you feel something?
Yeah, we're fine. Okay, very good. All right, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, yeah.
Look, we got done before midnight.
So, we, um, we voted already, so thank god.
Yeah, we voted, yeah, we voted last time, we sat the public hearing for March first, and that we're gonna hold it regardless whether or not the Z B A's read it.
Good.
They're ready, they voted. Yeah, they're. I think they were worried about having. They do wanna go first.
Why's that?
Well, when it comes time for the, the voting, I think they felt like their part would be quicker, so, um, I think the presentation would be all at once. But I think when it comes to who gets to make a decision first, they all wanna go.
They must make a decision first.
Huh?
They must make a decision first.
Yes, they actually do, it's true.
The zoning board, because you can't approve it.
Right.
If it's illegal until it's.
We can approve it pending.
You can do it.
Well, it's pending, yeah.
Great, it was nice to see you all, just so few hours after I left.
You were the last holdout, if I remember, right?
Well, I think, I think Aaron stuck it out too, zoning.
No, he left.
No.
No, no, he left before the, yeah.
I was so engrossed in the subject matter. Thanks for sticking it out, you guys too, that was late.
Good night, Mike, I'll see you next time.
Thank you all.
Thank you, have a good night.
Good night.
So there's no new business on the agenda, we do have.
Did we get a referral?
Yes, well, kind of, yes. Our best to do an informal review, just wanna share duties of Nine Morris Avenue.
That's next to, that's Bocor's.
Yeah, that they want to look at a, um.
Oh, it's from you.
Are you gonna do that tonight?
No, 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 we're just discussing it, it's gonna be, they're gonna come next time. We're just doing it in a board business, 'cause it came in, so they're looking, um, for a special use permit, the special use of philanthropy, assuming that the Z B A, you know, is, um, has a bulk requirement of two acre lots with fifty yard, uh, fifty feet side yard setbacks. It's only seventy-five foot wide lot. is, um, has a bulk requirement of two acre lots with fifty yard, uh, fifty feet side yard setbacks, but it's only seventy-five foot wide lot. So I was watching the Z B A, uh, meeting, they didn't touch on, on the lot sizes and the setbacks very much, they kind of, it was, there was not much discussion on that. In our code, there is a loophole where the planning board is not, uh, does not have rights for site plan review in existing property in the R one.
Okay.
So in the, in the other districts, we can actually, there's, there's always site plan review. So what they've asked us for, so what we'll have to be ready for next time when they come, is just a, is just an informal review.
Okay.
The questions that, the planning that Z B A has asked us to, to look at.
Oh, they've sent specific questions for us?
Yeah, it just came in. Would like to hear any thoughts of P B A, has on the following topics, I don't think any additional comments or recommendations you and the board may have. How many parking spaces required for the use, uh, it's, we're gonna have to, hopefully everything's in here, 'cause it was, I was having a lot of trouble following what was actually happening on this property. You know, with respect to, I, the only thing that seemed clear to me was there are three people in, you know, in the office, but then the question is then the public interaction, the, you know, the, um.
Did you get it, excuse me, there's a statement of support in the back of that, which goes into some detail with regard to.
Full E A F.
Yeah, the back of that.
Zoning board, oh, statement of support, it's, it's.
Yeah, that, that talks about, really it's a environmental thing, but it does talk about, um, trips to the site, and it talks about the amount of parking spaces.
And who, I'm sorry.
I prepared that.
Oh, you prepared this, thank you for your support.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have philanthropic institution very well defined in our code as.
But it is, um, okay.
Well, that also lists.
Have to take a look at.
It, it lists the organizations in town that, that are supported by this organization, and then that's just a little part of what they do.
There's an institute.
So.
It's, I'm sorry, the philanthropy is referring to itself as Nine Morris Avenue LLC?
No, that's gonna be the property owner.
Oh, I see, ah, lost and.
Lost and, lost and found.
Found, lost, oh, I get it, lost and found.
All right, so the, the zoning board appeals, asking for a parking space, um, the code is unclear, speaking of one for each three beds.
Okay.
If there's no beds.
In relation to beds?
Yeah. Does a circular drive by necessary parking space, does the number of spaces place any burden on emergency vehicles? If the property is used as suggested in the plan, what are the planning board's thoughts about traffic on nine V being affected? Are there concerns about this use as regards to impact on neighboring homes? Um, is the planning board aware of any other applications for special use in the village, whether approved or denied? I, I think what's interesting is, are there concerns about this use as regards to impacts on the neighboring homes? I think the code is very clear, speaking to the incompatibility of use, when it talks about, you know, a special use permit, but on a two acre lot.
But the two, this isn't two acres.
With fifty, fifty foot side yard setbacks, obviously, I think what that's speaking to is impact, right? And compatibility of those uses and providing a buffer, right? Which would not exist in this, so it seems to me, and obviously we're not the Z B A, it seems, but they're asking for opinion, it seems odd to me to consider an area variance that kind of circumvents the intention of the buffer of the uses, right? Because clearly the code is, the code is, I believe the code is speaking to the, to the legislative intent of why it was drafted that way, which is that you need a buffer, right? That if you're in the, because two acre lots, those are, those are big lots, right, especially in the village, and to say that this use can be approved, but on a two acre lot with the fifty foot side yard setback, which puts you, you know, there's a good buffer between you and your neighbors. That is nowhere near what's happening here. I mean, it's a seventy-five foot wide lot with a, with a rather, rather large house. It also then has curb cuts on High Street, um, which could, the change could potentially be changed in the, uh, in the future, they're saying they have no intention of it right now, but obviously the, the, you know, it would require additional site plan review, um, and then the circular drive in the front. So obviously the impacts to the neighbors, it's, it's very, it would be very different than obviously a residence, you know, which would, um.
All of that is, I, I encourage you to read it, I mean, I, I understand, I'm sure.
You will.
We will, we haven't, yeah, we haven't, that's what we're just discussing, yeah.
If you, if you, if you, if you consider what's going in there, and, and obviously I'm, I'm an advocate here.
We understand that.
The, um, the activity that will go on there is, is less than residential, I think that's an easy, easy leap. And I think that when you.
I don't know about my resident, I'm not home from like seven to six.
Well, you know, the family that's living there is, is got kids, that they get taken to school and, you know, I mean, and, and this.
Right, there's all comparisons that can be.
Yeah, there's all kinds of comparisons that can be, you know.
A lot of different hours, yeah.
And I think that when you look at, I clearly think that when, when they wrote that in terms of when illiminary institutions or philanthropic institutions, convalescence home, nursing homes, and hospitals, I don't think they clear, I think you made, kind of made the point that they didn't clearly think through what might be a genuine philanthropic institution.
Yeah, and a philanthropic benefit to the community, a lot of codes say that it's for the community, not just, oh, we're philanthropic, it's that you're, that the, that the immediate residents get some sort of benefit, right? That when a, that when a village looks to do some sort of discretionary change or, or prove a special use, that, that, that there is a benefit to the village, but ours, ours does not, it's not clear enough.
Yeah, some, some do, and they don't, not that they don't all.
Neighboring towns do, and we would look to neighboring codes when ours are silent, or hopefully they'll be able to do that.
It's quite, it's a fair list of, of, of organizations in the town that benefit, benefit from, I mean, it, it, I think there's only one in the village, and that's maybe part, you know, that's, the Shakespeare Festival often has office space.
Office space, yeah.
So, that, that goes to it, and I think the proof with regard to what they were thinking in terms of the scale of things, is when they put three, uh, one space for three beds. It, it's for that whole category.
For the.
The parking, parking, you know, they're clearly thinking of a bigger building and more parking, and, and, and none of that is really necessary, at least that's my, that's, that's.
Right.
That's my, my pitch and my logic for getting through there. And, I don't know, you've been here a while, you've been here a while?
Seventeen years.
Oh, you know that was a funeral home?
Yes.
And you know, and I stood out on that sidewalk many times.
That was a long time ago, yeah, well.
Well, that's, you know.
Twenty-five?
Probably twenty-five, I guess, yeah, you know, and you know, next door was a real estate office for many years.
To the left?
At La Sardis or?
Armstrong.
Oh, the Armstrongs.
There were quite a few doctors spread in that whole area.
And then La Sardis was the.
Yeah, yeah, well, doctors are, yeah, that's altered the R one.
And actually, and actually, you know, the, a home office kind of thing is, is, certain, certain professions can practice out of their home in the, in the R one district.
Yeah, well.
A doctor or a dentist would certainly generate.
But again, those are, those are, those are old, with some old code, it's, you know, it's old, seamstress, you know, millinery, you know, hat makers, dressmakers, things, the code needs to be updated for what a, what a home occupation is, you know.
Yeah.
There's no acupuncturist, chiropractor, yeah, you know, it's a, hat makers, dressmakers.
Well, it's medically. She, she happens to be an acupuncturist.
Yes, she is, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, she is, yeah.
So, um.
Um, can I ask, does the letter, does the ask from zoning board indicate a date by which they?
Well, they've already set a public hearing.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, and when, when is that?
Fifteenth of March.
Okay.
Bring me a birthday cake.
Oh, is that your birthday?
Oh.
Fifteenth of March.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So they asked, so we'll, um, they're gonna come in for the next one, so folks can just kind of look it over, it's one to get you kind of a flavor of what it is.
Okay.
And you were at the Z B A, right, 'cause you gave us notes, thank you for the notes.
Yeah.
That was very helpful, and I looked at the tape, you know, the video, rather, there wasn't a whole lot of.
It kept coming up.
There wasn't a whole lot.
The zoning board kept coming up, so I piped up, but I wasn't sure if I was supposed to for the.
There wasn't a whole lot of discussion on the, uh, on the lot size and the set, and the side yard setbacks, right?
No, that's, that's new.
Which I was amazed, because I'm just like, that, that's, to me, that's everything.
Now, how, how did the woman presenter do?
What's that?
Who is that, who is that?
Land.
Oh, she did fine, that, that, was she from?
She's my daughter.
Oh, she did great.
Oh, very good.
I thought she was really good. No, yeah, it was a good presentation, it was a strong presentation, I thought, and then, long discussion, actually, I stayed longer than I thought I would, and it was interesting, yeah.
Oh, very good. Very good, okay.
Well, see, we'll bet this on.
Tutor her well.
Well, she goes to the Phillips Town with me all the time, she's been going for years, and I gotta get out of this business. See ya.
Good night, family business.
Yes, I was surprised that they didn't cover.
So can you, can you repeat the, the argument or the?
So, so. So like, you know, when, when, whenever you have an incompatible use, you think about buffer zones, and you think about, how do you get these things to work, right? So it seems to me that the code, what the code is saying, is that a two acre lot size with a fifty yard side yard setback talks about buffering, right?
And they talk about buffering in the same, in the same clause that they identified the philanthropic use, so.
Yeah, so they're saying that you're gonna, you know, you're gonna set up this nursing home, or you're gonna do whatever, but let's just make sure that it's a Butterfield, right? That it's way in the middle, and that, you know, any, whether it's noise, or odors, or light, or, you know, or activity, that you're fairly well buffered from it, right? And that's really kind of the difference, when you look at Loretta Rest is a good example, where it's just, it just, everything keeps getting closer and closer, and I can't imagine what the views are like in that house now, with all that light and all that paving and all, you know what I mean? So, you look, so the code, it seems to me that the code is speaking very clearly, saying that there's, that there's an incompatibility, right? And that to address that incompatibility is a larger lot with, with side yard setbacks.
And that's what the variance, so the zoning board would be responsible for two things, the special use permit and the variance to deal with this issue.
And then issuing an area variance, which I think is very.
It's a large variance is.
Well, that, and it's also just kind of going, it, it's, that, that's not what the, we're, we're not zoning, we're not, you know, we're, we're basically just supposed to be interpreting the code and, you know, and issuing some sort of variance on the code, but really to kind of say, oh, we'll just kind of eliminate this buffer, right?
Could I, um?
But my concern would be that, like, two things, one, think, think about, initially they say two people are gonna work there, and ultimately three, all right?
Yeah, and how do you?
There's a lot of space in that, in that building.
It's a large house, yeah.
So, what's preventing them from sub leasing, or leasing out the remainder of the building to another ten office workers for another concern?
There, the, the Z B A would have to stipulate within granting the special use permit.
Right.
That the limitation is for, and they seemed accepting of it, they were the ones that suggested it almost in the meeting, at least that's how it felt, that it would be the two full-time workers and one part-time worker, and that.
But when they grow.
And when they grow, yeah.
And they may.
And they may, but they have to come back once a year to reapply for the special.
But once you're in, and your nose is under the tent.
Exactly, yeah, that's, that's the, so I guess maybe a question should be asked, like, what's your anticipation for growth, you know, that could be a.
Yeah, unfortunately, the planning board has no right to do a site plan review, and really what we would do is, we would say, okay, great, you're only using two rooms, we're counting all the rooms, right? 'Cause we have to plan for the full, for the full use, right?
Yeah.
And the full impacts of the property, you know, so, but since we don't have that ability, obviously they're looking to us to say what's the right, you know, I mean, I think the only way we can apply our code is the office code, to take the square footage and do one for one fifty, and then one for three hundred on the upper floors, and just say that's the required parking. Um, and no, it probably doesn't fit in a circular driveway, right?
Is that?
And with respect to impacts, you know, you, you know, it, it's, it, it, you know, you may be right, it may be less than a family, right? An active family, but, you know.
But at the, if you max it out, and if they, are they entitled to that? I mean, I would interpret the code, I would interpret that as them being entitled to the full, um, you know, the full number of parking, or, sorry, full, the, the full number of, of occupancy, the full occupancy.
Right.
Of the building, once they.
Are in the space.
Are in the space, and so it's hard to, you know, once it's, once they're an established business, it becomes, it, it, it becomes almost, you know, unjust and, and un-American to say, no, you can't grow, and you can't grow your business, you're too big for this, you, we can't, you know, you can't expand into these other rooms, or you can't add full-time staff.
But there's.
Yeah, but I think what they would end up doing is, and I spoke about this a little bit last time, we talked about it when we were by the tree, that they've got a curb cut on High Street. So they put a parking lot in the back of the building, you know?
Yeah.
Which is real, you know, aesthetically pleasing in a historic area.
Yeah.
They seemed pretty, um, that question was asked at the Z B A, and they seemed pretty, um, set that they wouldn't use it except for emergencies, but again, that's, that's not really taking into account potential future growth, you know, and, and then I think what came from the audience as a concern, Marie was, was there, was the idea of then, if there is additional parking, and that's, is the fog line the line, the parking line basically on ninety? She mentioned the fog line, I think it must be.
The fog line.
Fog line, is that referred to the, the white line?
Oh, I think, that's the white line, yeah.
Yeah, so that there's parking there along ninety on both sides, but that it's actually pretty tight on that side, and I can attest to that is, uh, 'cause even in my small car, I sometimes feel like.
It's also not private property, I mean, it's not parking that they could say, oh, this satisfies my requirement.
So it's not actually there parking.
Yeah, it can't be ca, yeah, it can't be counted.
So, but that's what her concern was, because I guess in addition to the employees, they wanted to ask, say that they would put a cap on the number of people visiting the office, would be six, so that there would never be meetings of greater than six, which again, it's, it seems like a very small, my, my, my question is that it seems like a very small office for such a large building on such a small site, if that makes sense, like, because of the setback conditions, yeah, it seems.
Yeah. Yeah.
And is, does the, even when they, uh, when they apply for this, does this mean that it will not be, there will be no residential dwelling there? I mean, it's, it's in an R one, so, yeah, you.
I guess it changes, it changes it to offices.
Okay.
Yeah, and they would have to renovate the interior for offices, for, to, to meet the office code, so the interior of the building would, would change to meet whatever codes, you know, I, I don't know if sprinklers are required.
Yeah, they, they would be, because of the size of the, the three stories.
It seems pretty bizarre to me that you would spend that much money on an office for a maximum of three people. I mean.
That's, I, I think.
Winter Hill is a good example of a very, very large and beautiful building that somebody invested in and turned into a very beautiful office space, that is not occupied by many people, and.
Yeah. Yeah, and the space, the space itself, the, you know, the restoration of the property is, is a philanthropic effort too.
Yeah, yeah, there's that too.
You know, so there's different, there's two, there's two things going on, and it must be the same thing here, no, it clearly doesn't make economic sense to go buy a million dollar house for three people, you could go to Butterfield and lease it, you know, but obviously there's.
Right. Maybe we should refer them to Butterfield and say, hey, why are you there, why don't you turn off the lights?
Maybe they could move in the senior setting.
But maybe it's, you know, it's an investment for the, you know, the philanthropy too, that it's just basically.
It's a very central location, I mean, the other concern that came up would, was, um, from the audience as well, was whether it would set a precedent for, um, you know, the idea of shifting residents, the number of residences within the residential district.
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
And it reduces the number of residents.
It does, I mean, once you've done something, there's your precedent, right?
Yeah.
And once that's changed.
And when you look at the, the variance to the area variance, well then how do you enforce the next area variance, right? How do you enforce the next, you know, bulk requirement, right? For special use permit, if you've, if you've approved an area variance that drastically reduces the requirements for, for a special use permit, then what's the argument for enforcing the next one, right? And are you treating applicants fairly?
I think that's, that was one of the strongest arguments, because if, if, then you could just imagine if each one of those larger houses along Morris Avenue.
Right.
Shifted from residential, and, you know, whatever the implications of that are to that, I mean, from, from my perspective though, you are adjacent to a gas station, so, it's not that it's that secluded, but I don't know what matters.
But it backs up, it backs up onto a, on.
High Street backs up onto the other, the ones along the park, you know, the rear of it, I mean, it's.
Yeah, the high, yeah, but they're listed here, I think, in the letter.
And once. And once, um, I'm just thinking, like, if, if, uh, if the owner of the property ever wanted to, even, I mean, the people who, the family who lives there now, they are within their rights to enter their property from High Street if they wanted to. And now there's a certain level of, um, I guess comfort in knowing, okay, it's, it's a family and they're not, you know, they're, they're not renting out the space as an office and there isn't a lot of traffic coming in and out, but I mean, that, that's not, so I don't think that's something that could be, that could be prevented.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to figure out how you, how you control the, uh, the growth scenarios and the, you know, the passage of time, it's, at that point, it's an office, right?
Yeah, yeah, and it's done without a site plan where these kinds of questions aren't really, they don't, they're not, these questions aren't really subject to rigorous examination and debate, right?
Well, they did bring up a lot of, uh, a few times they brought up that they would do whatever landscaping was required of them, sort of
For screening?
Again, I'm not sure because I wasn't aware, I, I wasn't sure exactly, you know, I was sort of learning as I was listening, but it came up a few times, I think from the applicant's side, that, and we would certainly do whatever landscaping and maybe it was in relation to the fact that they were requiring, requesting a variance to the setback and so that, that would, I think the main considerations would be from, especially that they would be looking, that the ZBA would look for our advice on, or the parking and the, and any potential site modification. So we could, if, if, if one strategy could be, if it, you know, I don't know how we advise really, you know, based on all these different factors and how we would come to some kind of advice, but maybe that we would advise about certain conditions to counteract the setback issue.
The, the north setback really isn't that much. I looked today, I mean, if it's ten feet to the property line, that's about it.
It's very narrow, yeah.
And on the, the south side, maybe it's fifteen to twenty. There's not a lot of room on either side, north or south. And there's plenty of room to the west, you know, going towards High Street. And, you know, it's got, uh, currently have like a circular driveway in the front of the, the building now.
Yeah, you would think the impacts, in my opinion, would be less if you just, if you did put parking in the rear.
Yeah.
You know, you could landscape the High Street side and then just, you know, and then it's just not, you're not noticing all the activity.
I mean, it would, it would be actually
But they probably want, they probably want the ninety.
Would clean up that back part of the property because it's, you know, it's overgrown and it's, you know, it's kind of messy.
Alright, so I guess people, if your people won't take the packets or whatever, I mean, we'll, we'll discuss it at the, they're gonna come in.
And they're gonna come in.
Yeah.
Okay. And, uh, will, when they come in, will, um, Aaron or will somebody from the zoning board, so attend?
I'll ask, I'll ask if they can attend.
When are they coming on?
The eighth.
The eighth?
I always laugh when I see something like this.
What?
Dear Mr. Wolf and honorable members, like, he's not an honorable member.
Yeah, we're not an honorable members of the ZBA. Um, sorry, you were saying Zeta Lord, is that because we have?
We have two, we're gonna have two meetings, this first and this, this and the eighth, yeah.
The first and the eighth, oh, two meetings in a row.
It's the
The public hearing on the first.
On the fifteenth, potentially, if that's the date that the ZBA is proposing this.
Our public hearing is on the fifteenth, we're having a workshop.
What's on the fifteenth?
The
Public hearing for this.
The public, I'm sorry.
For this, not ours.
But the ZBA wants, suggested that it would be, oh, no, we're not, we're not parties.
We're not, we don't have any, right, yeah, yeah, we don't have any, for a good reason. So just be
It was ju- it was just the ZBA.
ZBA public hearing, and then on March one, our public hearing about, um, Susan Coskin's site plan.
Right.
Okay.
Um, public comment, we've got the public, board business, um, obviously we've met Monday morning at nine AM with, um, Matt Moran of Butterfield Realty, uh, Matt Wyble of, um,
Save Tree.
Of, uh, Save a Tree. Lara Stephanie Dave, we were all there, actually, same group. The arborist is preparing the report now, it's, um, it, I'm, it, it seems clear that his report is gonna suggest removal of the tree, unfortunately, that, um, so we'll see what's in that report. Um, obviously we asked him to be as detailed as possible, so when we have, when we're asked questions as to what happened to the tree, you know, why we're removing this tree that was under preservation and, you know, um, that we'll have, we'll have those answers in the report in the file, so when people question, um, as is their right, you know, obviously part of it was to, what the village was endeavoring to do, uh, the, the power planning board and, and the, and the village board as well, in the discretionary zoning change was to protect the tree. So obviously we need the answers to why that, um, didn't go so well.
And we, and we're gonna get the reports from Garrison Tree also?
I've had, yeah, um, I've asked and I
He said he was
Yeah, when they're available, so I asked when they're forthcoming, he had, he had sent me an email after we met saying, can I remove the tree? I said, not yet. I said, we need, really need to wait for the report. I don't, what, we don't wanna happen is then the, you know, he gets these reports, they say something, he wants to go take a look at it, right? You know, you know, I don't see any evidence of this or whatever, cause I don't wanna, obviously, once, you know, once there's no tree to look at or no, or no site to look at, then, um, then I don't know whether or not that affects, uh, Matt's ability to finish his report, right?
Well, Matt did ask, he, Matt did indicate that he needed the reports from Garrison Tree to, before he completed and delivered his
Oh, no, that's, he and I discussed that even before, yeah, even before the whole thing, was that I didn't really want the report written without those reports. Because they, they need to take a position. Either the reports are, some are available and they're included and all the information is in them or they're not presented. We need to document that, cause obviously, as I said, in our role to, you know, you know, to enforce the site plan, then obviously we gotta, we're gonna have to answer as to what happened at the tree.
Right.
So the only way we can really answer that, since we're not there, you know, treating the tree, is those reports. So the reports hopefully will be forthcoming and that he'll include those, he'll have comment on those reports. He had some questions about treatment, cause it didn't look like treatments were done, it didn't, obviously, we didn't see, like, like Dave was saying, we didn't see any evidence of mulching, you know, obviously the tree was
Limb trim, limb trimming.
There were, there were vines, I mean, there were vines that had been
All that bramble, yeah.
To grow up into the
So we'll see what he has to say as a, as a licensed arborist to kind of say, you know, just so we have, like I said, it really, it's really, no matter how many, you know, how many pages long this report gets, the tree's still in the condition it's in which he thinks needs to be removed, it's beyond any, any, um, any kind of good growth, you know, or condition.
Well, I think, I think, yeah, based on the condition of the site around the tree, because they had compacted the soil beyond the fence and they had cut away.
Well, that was always anticipated, but I think what he was saying was that, you know, has it been fertilized, has it been watered? Has it been treated, growth enhancers, all that stuff that, you know, so that's what he wants to see in the report, cause apparently, you know, he's a licensed arborist, so he kind of says, okay, you know, obviously knowing plenty about plants, but not so much about ours, it, it, it's gonna go through a period of stress and here's how the tree should be carried through the stress to get the, to achieve the most likely, you know, the highest level of, you know, likelihood that it's gonna survive the stress. There's no question that there's some risk, right? Um, so that's really what we really need him to kind of just, uh, just to put into writing based on his professional opinion, you know, what he sees in the reports, what he sees on the site. So in the event that the reports aren't forthcoming and he wants to go back, or in that the reports are forthcoming and he sees something and he wants to go back, I don't, I'm not, I don't see a rush to remove the tree, I mean, there's always, the, the, the challenge was always to work around that tree, so it's not a new challenge.
Right.
Um, and the tree takes no more space dead than it does alive, well, you know, it's, it's not leafed out, so I mean, it's, it's the same size it is whether or not, uh, you know, there's sap flow or not.
It's not really preventing him from going in there and doing the, you know, thirteen or fourteen foot excavation for the
No, no, so I think it, yeah, and like, and once it's out, then it's out, we can't go back and we can't, you know, it's like, you know, you know.
In the event, so the, the site plan was designed around the tree. Um, and I can imagine that once the tree is removed, there, it, it may be, it may be interesting for the property owner to revise the site plan.
Well, remember, well, I don't know if you were on the boards then, yeah, I think you were, but remember substantial conformity, it's, it's feet and degrees, so you can shift the building like that, you can't move it. Because substantial conformity doesn't allow, cause we asked the planning board at the time, the, 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 the village board, we asked the planning board to say, okay, help us nail down substantial conformity, cause our job is to kind of protect the, you know, the, the residents' interests. They wanna know what's gonna happen there.
Right.
So you can write substantial conformity and it's way too mushy, right?
So they defined it, right.
The planning board came up with degrees and feet and it's not much.
Okay.
So, yeah, you can say, well, gee, and that's a good thing and a bad thing, you could now maybe even come up with a better design, right? The angle of Leahy, you know?
Right.
You know, cause that was off of the hyphen off of the hospital, normally you just, you would not divide a site and put it at that weird angle and its relation to the street and it's, you know, but, you know, so, if you had a clean slate, the site would be completely different. You know, and there were plenty of people at the, um, the charrette that, that was part of the discuss, you know, should, should it just go back to plan, you know, to clean slate and, 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 you know, and take full advantage of the property? So, yeah, so they can, they can move a little bit, but substantial conformity is pretty limited. I wanna say it's, it's ten feet and like five degrees or something like that, it's a, it's a small
I remember that it's small.
Yeah, cause the planning board kind of nailed that down to kind of, yeah, and, and again, it, it cuts both ways.
Yeah.
You, you might now have the ability to make it somewhat better, but you don't, because it's limited by substantial conformity. But at least the residents say, okay, the model that I saw, you know, that's pretty much what was built. As opposed to, you know, no, no different than all these other applications where we say, okay, they kind of know what to expect. But, you know, the lights on the big pickup truck are gonna go this far up the fence, not, oh geez, it's completely different, and now they're, you know, a
As long as we don't have to listen to Barshoff anymore.
That's true too.
Um, substantial, oh, sorry, I had a quick question, did they, so, wh- when they set this, when they approved the site plan way back when, was there a contingency plan put into place for if the tree were to
No, unfortunately, unfortunately, there's not, the, um, the, the way the easement was written, it just anticipated trimming of the tree. And when a tree canopy comes onto your property, you're allowed to do whatever, whatever's on your property.
Okay.
So on those two residential lots where it covers a big chunk of the backyards, um, cause they're very small lots, there's an easement against trimming, you're not allowed to just trim, you're allowed to only trim for the health and care of the tree. So it, the easement doesn't anticipate replacing the tree, but obviously trimming the tree all the way to the ground is the biggest trim, you know?
That's a huge prune.
So it, you kind of say, well, it's just kind of assume, it's silent to it, but clearly removal has to be discussed as well, so that's why, when they wanted to remove it, I said, listen, we've got this recorded easement, we have this, it's still a condition on a site plan that is not yet even substantially complete, it's only one of, you know, of five buildings, whatever, six buildings.
Six buildings.
If you count hyphens, um.
Four, five, six.
Yeah.
And they can just pick any tree specimen they want at this point?
They're not obligated to put a tree back.
They're not obligated to put it back, yeah, but then
But they've offered.
But then you'd have to go and then address the easement, the, um, you know, kind of extinguishing the easement. Um, I guess you don't need, I guess the argument would be you don't need an easement on a tree that doesn't, that, that can't be trimmed, that doesn't exist, right?
But it's still our role to approve the, the demo, taking down of the tree.
Well, I think we have to be involved in it basically just to, to, to tell the story, right? And to say that we did the due diligence on the site plan, which is preserve the tree, I mean, there's, you know, the four or five pages or whatever, an appendix K that says, here's what's supposed to happen in the EAF with this tree.
But could we argue that replacing it with a specimen is a way of replacing it? And I'm just curious, I'm not, I'm not like suggesting it
Replacing it, replacing it with a
With a particular specimen that is particular, has a particular similar canopy over the years or something like that, I don't know. I, I'm just throwing it out.
I think it's reasonable to, I'm, I think it's reasonable to express an interest in that direction. And I think that from what Matt Moran had said on Monday, they're open to that.
Yeah.
My, my fear is, is that they, and this is the first thing I said when they wanted to cut the tree down, that they're gonna wanna expand that condo.
Yeah.
You know, because when you think about it, I mean, initially I thought, well, they can't do that because they have a parking issue to begin with. But the parking for the condo is underneath it.
Yeah.
So expanding it, 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 you know, it's self-serving, you know? You expand it, you, you're creating the parking for it underneath it, so.
Especially by removing the root ball.
Yeah, substantial conformity though, because it's, it's almost like PUD Lite, it's almost like a planned unit development Lite, which is basically, it's all approved as a, as a whole. And so the approvals are all tied together to say that, you know, this thing has to substantially conform to what has been approved. So that way then everybody has some sort of, some sort of understanding as to what the end result is.
Yeah, but, I mean, it, it, look at it from his perspective, if he comes back and says, well, I can get two more units in there, you know, I can make another quarter of a million dollars.
It might be worth another couple election cycles.
Yeah, it, you know, might be worth it for him to rehire Barshoff and have him come here and bark for another couple of meetings.
Threaten us, the congregation.
I, I, it's, um, it's a different planning board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know that, uh, a lot of planning boards, I don't, would approve that level of density.
Right.
You know, on a site and I can't imagine increasing it, you know, what, you know, I mean, it's a, it's dense. You know, when you drive through that thing, I mean, more building, I mean, and people haven't seen four, five, six, which is a massive amount of structure. I don't know what's going on with one, I haven't heard anything about one for years.
It's, it's basically gonna look like a wall of buildings when you ride down ninety.
Yeah, so I mean, making it larger, I don't think, I don't, there's, you know, and it, it would require a new site plan. It's not a modification.
Right.
It would really just be a new site plan, it'd be recalculating, I can't imagine they would wanna go through that, but yeah, but yeah, for enough money, sure. But, um, it would be, it would be a big undertaking. And I don't see how they even have the room, well, first of all, they subdivided, right, so I mean, those residential lots are now carved out.
Right.
Right? You want some sort of buffer between, you know, between the residential and the commercial and that just continue to tighten it up. But who knows? I'm not gonna try and predict the future. But yes, they're anxious to get the tree out, so that's, there's some, some wonder there, but you know, I'm, there's probably just one, you know, it's something that needs done, they probably just wanna take care of it, so, but obviously, we just wanna make sure we don't, we have an ability to finish the, you know, finish the, the, the hard look at that, because you know, like I said, if he has questions and the tree's gone, well, then it's just like, well, then we don't get answers, right? It'd be good to just have a complete report, put it in the file.
Yep.
And when people just say, you know, what happened, we say, here's what happened, right, foil the report.
I'd like to see Garrison's reports, really.
Yeah, we, uh, he'd said that, he would send them when they're available.
Finished writing.
Well, it's, it is, it is, uh, it's not the greatest response, because something that is contemporaneous, right, it's, it's happening as it goes and you would think that the arborist is writing the report and sending it to the, you know, to, to Butterfield in, in, in real time.
For, you know, building them.
Yeah, um, but maybe it's just, hopefully, maybe that's not the case, hopefully, it's maybe it's just, oh, we didn't keep them, or they gotta re, you know, we gotta, we gotta put them all together, or, you know, but we'll, um, we'll, we'll see what, what comes, but Matt's report, uh, at, while, from, um, Save a Tree will obviously include either the contents of those or the absence of them, or some combination thereof.
Was there not, um, was there not, did, was it Matt who said that, um, there was no requirement to pursue a tree care program because they hadn't started building?
Well, it, yeah, it, that, so we'll see, we'll see what the arborist's statement is on that, well, yeah, because it's a little inconsistent.
It is, well, that's, that is inconsistent.
Because the same requirement is for the fence, so why did the fence go up years ago? Right, so if the understanding was different, why was it different for only a section? Right, this piece is, so it talks about excavation and they're saying they haven't excavated yet, well, they haven't excavated that building. Clearly they've excavated, there, there is stuff piled all around the perimeter of that fence. So it is what it is, it is, it is what it is at this point, so I mean, it's basically just that if they misunderstood something, that the, that the, that the trigger for doing certain things hasn't yet been pulled because it's not this excavation, this, you know, this carving out the basement of four, five and six, the parking garage, it doesn't follow frankly that then the fence is up, because the fence is the same It doesn't follow frankly that then the fence is up, because the fence is the sa- has the same timing, has the same trigger. And that fence has been up for years. It went up almost immediately. Um, because excavation was occurring all around the tree. Yes, not up to the tree, but I don't, I don't know. Yeah, so, it, but again, they both had the same trigger and one was treated one way and one was treated the other way, but they're gonna, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna take their position. And that's why I think the tree needs to still be there. If anybody wants to go over, you know, it may be that Matt from Save A Tree questions, you know, some things or wants to, you know, confirm things, or even the two arborists wanna meet or whatever. But it's worth, it's not, no, we'll try to get this wrapped up, but it's worth a couple weeks for them to just kind of do a full report and then we can just put it in the file.
Unfortunately, by that point, it'll, it'll leaf out. You know?
Yeah.
What are you cutting the tree for then? The leaves are out on it.
It's beautiful, it's a lot. Actually, there was a lot of, there, there was a lot of new growth, a lot of, there were a lot of buds. It looked like it. It looks like it's gonna be beautiful. As it swan song, poor thing. Alright.
Yeah, but the good things, the good thing too is, like I said, it's a very independent opinion, of somebody that saw the tree at the beginning and wants to preserve the tree and then looks at the tree and says, I think it's gotta come out. I mean, that's, that's good, that's, yeah.
That's a good trusted.
That's a good, that gives me a comfort level to kind of say, well, it's not, you know, it's an independent decision. It's somebody that understood the tree from the beginning and that they're, they're coming up to the same thing, 'cause obviously there's no undoing it once it's pulled out. Yeah. Okie dokie.
I like the conference table idea.
Yeah, I think it'd be cool actually too, and he seems open to that, so what, what we had asked actually, just for the record, is just that if they would give us, if the village would have some purpose, I mean, I don't, I don't think we wanna get into like personal use, some, you know, people, oh, I'd want, I want a piece of it. I, I think it would just get too weird or too difficult to administer, but-
I got a piece you didn't.
Yeah, I think it, but if the village were wanting to do something like, you know, something for Village Hall or, or even something, I don't know, Public Senior Center is frankly.
Only it's gonna be a ten to two and, and it's a good, and actually, it's gonna be senior center slash community center, according to Mary Ellen O'Dell.
Oh, that's interesting.
When she attended a-
Their site plan is not-
Yeah, the site, if that's inconsistent with the site plan, but.
Unless they bust everybody. Alright, so, so what I'd asked Matt Moran at Butterfield is, would you, would he, would he be willing to give us the logs if the village had some sort of interest? And it'd probably all have to be kind of donated. Somebody would probably have to talk to, I know Danes has a mill.
Yep.
That, um, that they might be able to mill it, so if somebody knows them. Talk to them and just say, would you be willing to, you know, to, to mill it and dry it?
Danes is a friendly woman. I've known them for a long time. I can, I can ask him if he'll, if he'll talk to them or not.
Yeah, so, ask him, yeah, ask him.
That would be great if, if the villi- like if the village could make a table.
Yeah, at least it's something a little positive, you know, good from bad.
Yeah.
That, um, that, you know, that it's-
From the initial report, they sampled the tree and it was solid, yeah.
Solid, yeah.
There was only, the decay that was there was surface decay. It wasn't, you know, embedded into it from, you know, what the report said anyway.
And sometimes that can make amazing pattern too, I mean.
Yeah.
Amazing figure, so.
Irregularities and the-
There's also, I know the middle school at the school, the, I don't forget, I think it might be Mr. Wick's class. Um, they do a lot of sort of building and construction too, so another potential
Yeah.
Place to donate if, if it's something that is viable. If there's enough money viable there.
Yeah. Huge trunk.
Yeah, it really is.
Especially like the first like ten, fifteen feet, it's massive. Alright, very good. Motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait, before, wait, I just wanna ask, um, you had mentioned, um, uh, when we were talking with the applicant that was here, it was Sue Hoskins. You had said, oh, yeah, but we don't put up signs. It would be a good idea to have, um, you know, signs. Should we look into sort of changing our-
We've looked into it, I mean, it's, I think we're at Vancouver, I think, they put, you know, huge ones out, they're like this big. And the nice thing is just that then it says, okay, this is under application to these boards. And then nobody, you know, I mean, like the, yeah, like the Stone Street Shed is a good example, people saying, well, I just didn't know. And then your, your experience of that is now it's too late and I didn't really, you know, and then the village gets kind of dragged into, you know, this, this neighbor dispute. Um, obviously, that's in Article seventy-eight, it's, it's bigger than a neighbor dispute, but it's essentially a neighbor dispute, it's basically, you know, so I mean, if you can get them talking earlier, which I think is good about Sue. So, yeah, I mean, we've, we've talked about the notice, you know, the green cards are good, but I mean-
Well, and that's important, and I don't think it should replace, first, I don't think it should replace it. Um, I think that there's a difference between um, the cards going to adjacent neighbors and then this sign being seen by people who may pass by.
Yeah, I mean, I've discussed it with, um, with HDRB, 'cause there are a lot of the,
Yeah.
A lot of the concern is the, or a lot of the dispute has to, the historic stuff and people not really knowing that something was going to change.
So how do we, how do we sort of revive that discussion and move that, that-
It'd probably have to be like a multi-board meeting, just kind of talk about board process and procedures and, you know, like we're doing one thing that we haven't done really, I don't know ever really, it's just joint public hearing, 'cause we're kind of trying to be helpful, we're trying to be, you know, and waving public hearings, like we waved it for, you know, the remark, 'cause it's just, you know, we really are they're residents, but in some ways they're customers, right? And so you kind of wanna make sure that you're, that you're productive and that you're kind of being, you're aware of their schedule and that they're, you know, um, that time is money for all of us, whether it's a business or a residence or, so, yeah, you wanna enforce the code, but you wanna be, you know, you wanna be aware and sensitive to their, to the realities of, of, of what they are going through, so.
One thing I've noticed over, it, it seems to come up almost every meeting, you know? We all say it at one point or another, it's not covered in the code, or this isn't covered in the code.
Oh, yeah.
I, I, isn't the code being-
Updated?
The code updated, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, we should have meetings with them as well. I mean, there should be a joint board meeting with, um, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of piecemeal.
I think maybe what would be helpful is when, when we make statements like that, you know, it gets flagged and then
Set over?
Pushed over, you know? Not that it just, you know, it's just internal, but it actually gets some progress made to it.
No, I agree, and it probably should be more formal. Typically, just like shoot Marie or whoever an email, just kind of say, you know, like, the legislative intent of the parking waivers isn't really clear too, that it's really for like just existing spaces. Not the expansion of uses, that its intention was for commercial, you know?
Look at, look at the big issue with the medical offices in Butterfield.
And that's, and I sent it over to her too. I said, it's just, you know, I said, the code is pretty good. The problem is it only anticipates medical in an R one.
Right.
'Cause, but the code's good. It says, okay, waiting, every seat in the waiting room should have a car, right? Every treatment room should have a car, right? Well, that makes sense, right? 'Cause that's the maximum, that's the maximum use at any given time, right? But yet, that's only in the R one. So you have what's good. And no difference tonight when we're talking about these home occupations. Our home occupations are, you know, dressmaker, seat, you know, hat maker, yeah.
So, um, so do you think we should, uh, start our own kind of formal registry of making note of when, when we say that and then, and prepare a, a-
A memo?
A memo regularly or?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
Do we need to do, I mean, I, it seems like doing a memo every time we meet would be a little excessive, um, but maybe.
We can, we can have a blank form, we can handwrite, you know, what the, what the suggested change would be.
Yeah, like even tonight, which will be, which will be on the eighth as well. Yeah, light levels are not, you know? Light levels, it'd be nice to have, you know, I mean, 'cause that's a real-
Definitely.
Yeah. Light pollution is-
Oh, my gosh, the, I just, Butter, I, Butterfield parking lot is so overlit. It's amazing. I mean, it's, it's notable, it's remarkable. You wanna remark.
Yeah, and that's just it, and lighting's very subjective. Some people look at that and go, well, this is great, 'cause it's, it's very, it's bright, it's safe, it's, you know, it's, so it's just, it's a, it's really the, the majority has to kind of come together and then, you know, update the code to say, well, what do we, what's, how much is too much? How much is too little?
Do you see the lighting in Butterfield from Paulding? Is it Paulding that's on the up?
Well, you certainly will when they're done. I mean, they haven't gone up that way yet.
Yeah, you, you'd probably see like the afterglow of it right now.
I don't know how.
I haven't checked.
When they take down the, the brick pile, the rubble.
I would think though that most of it's gonna be blocked by four, five and six, because, although I don't know, there, there, there probably is gonna be pathways.
They'll have lighting around them, yeah, for pathways. Although may constantly not on the backside where the-
I don't know, I don't know, that's the back, that's the backside.
Where the residential lots.
That's what I'm saying, it's all the residuals.
When are, when are those under construction coming up? That's why they wanna remove the tree? Or we don't know?
Two years later, ready.
Already, yeah.
I don't, yeah, I don't think there's any permits. I don't think they've pulled permits on any of it.
Okay, so maybe, who knows? Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting. Curious.
I think they, I think there's been some talk at the HDRB about, um, the condominiums, three, four, five and six. I think just building three though. And the backside is up against the residential, so I'm not sure what the, I don't, I don't put the site plan.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay.
Is that it?
That's all.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Oh, you do it. Lara, Lara moved.
Uh, it is, it's really-
I'll check him.